I called to order the regular city council meeting Monday, January 6th, 2025 at 5:30 PM. At this time, I would ask you to please silence your cell phones or put them on vibrate to limit interruptions. Moving on to the agenda, item one, roll call.
Blessam.
Here.
Fuller.
Here.
Janser.
Here.
Olson.
Here.
Pitner.
Here.
Ross.
Here.
Samuelson.
Here.
Item two, join me in the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Moving on to item number three, that's the mayor's report. Today kind of reminds me of one of those days that during the season, if the Vikings were playing and you went to church service, that the priest would always be done in 30 minutes. So, you know, we're going to do, we're going to do our best so people can get to the, get to the Bison game. But just a couple of things on the mayor's report, had a couple of meetings with workforce partnerships, meeting with Northrop Grumman, a couple of special city council meetings, and then was able to join some civic leaders up at the Minot Air Force Base to welcome back members of Team Minot back from the deployment over in the Middle East, meeting to discuss Shatterproof Program, providing resources for our first responders. I also want to give out two, two shout outs to the Minot State Men's Basketball Team, ranked number five, two big victories over the weekend, and a special shout out to Minot's own Jackson Gun Bill, who broke the all-time three-point record for Minot State previously held by Tyler Rudolph. So, pretty cool, pretty action-filled weekend here in the Magic City. And at this time, I'm going to ask Ellen Fenner from the Minot Symphony to step forward to talk about a special project. Ellen, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mayor Ross. Member, members of the council, thank you for your time today. The Minot Symphony is a university and community orchestra that in range to, that aims to enrich lives by providing opportunities for musicians and inspiration to patrons through the education and performance of diverse orchestral repertoire, and has been doing so for nearly a century with, through a collaboration with Minot State University, a unique blend of student community and professional musicians. I come to you today to announce a community collaboration like no other, a century in the making. In celebration of your Minot Symphony Orchestra's 100th season coming up in 2025-26, we are honored to host Your Minot, Your Lyrics, a National Anthem Contest for Minot. We are asking writers, wordsmiths, and poets with a deep connection to the Magic City to submit a 20 to 40-line poem to be considered to celebrate Minot and all things the Magic City represents. The text will be, the chosen text will be set to an original composition of music composed by MSU's Dr. Emerson Eads. There is no fee to enter, leaving no barriers. The writer whose lyrics are chosen for the anthem will receive a $500 cash prize, lyrics credit, as well as two season tickets to the Minot Symphony's Centennial Season. The official entry form and details can be find out, found at minotsymphony.com starting tomorrow. Entries will be received by midnight on April 21st, 2025, and the entries will be reviewed by a panel of judges, including Mayor Ross, Dr. Eads, and Ephraim Amaya, the conductor of the Minot Symphony Orchestra. The winner will be announced here on May 19th, 2025, and the world premiere of Minot's Anthem will be played by your Minot Symphony with area choirs in March 2026. Entries should invoke a sense of pride, hope, and resilience. It should celebrate Minot's past, present, and future, acknowledging the hard work of its people, the beauty of our landscapes, or the unique charms that truly makes us the Magic City. We look forward to receiving entries from each of you and all who call or have called Minot home as we come together to celebrate the Magic City in song. I'd be happy to answer any questions if anybody has any at this time.
Are there any questions? Seeing none, thank you so much.
Thank you.
What a way to start the new year. With that, that concludes the mayor's report. If there are any questions, seeing none, we will move on to the city manager's report.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, be happy to answer any questions with regards to the city manager report that's included in the packet and available to the public.
Are there any questions of city manager? Seeing none, we'll move on to the city attorney's report. Steph.
Mayor, members of the council, there's a written report included in the packet, and I can answer any questions at this time.
Are there any questions of our city attorney? Seeing none, thank you, Steph. That's moving on to item five on the agenda, public hearing, public hearing 5.1, public hearing, consider final approval of Renaissance Zone Case M-105 Boomtown Enterprises LLC, applicant 117 West Central Avenue. Now is the time for those who wish to speak in favor for or against the final approval. Second call for those who wish to speak on this item on the agenda. Seeing none, what are the wishes of the council?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Mark.
Mr. Mayor, I move we close the public hearing and approve the item.
We have a motion by Mark. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Paul. Discussion. Any discussion? Seeing none, please record your vote.
Motion passed six to one with dissent from Alderman Samuelson.
Moving on to public hearing 5.2, building relocation request to 101943rd Street Southeast. Now is an opportunity for those who wish to speak in favor of or against the proposed building relocation request. Now is your time to step forward. Second call for those who wish to speak either for or against the building relocation. Seeing none, what are the wishes of the council?
Mr. Mayor.
Paul.
That we close the public hearing and approve the item with recommendations from staff.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a second by Mark. Any discussion?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Mike.
So, I, that is, it's good to see us coming to the end of this process for the Berkesdads. I guess they are here tonight. I know that it, it wasn't maybe everything you guys hoped. I know it's now the middle of January and it's, I don't know, 10 degrees below zero outside. You know, I don't know what that's going to mean for you to actually get that move done. One of the things, I guess, that I wanted to throw out, this to me shows us where we, we have to find ways to move things as, as quickly as we can. I know that there were a ton of missed steps on the Berkesdads' side. They would acknowledge that as well. They didn't know what they didn't know. And I think that, that that's been an important part of this. But I'm, I'm very sensitive to someone where, when we see them at the first part of September, and there's a chance they could get in that house and spend winter in a warm house. Instead, I think they're spending winter out of that. And, you know, again, I'm not here to say that there weren't pieces that could have been done better on their side. But I think we have to find ways as a city to make sure that we're moving things through, including if that means adjusting ordinances. Because right now, I think a lot of what we run into timing-wise is that we have notice requirements and hearings and all different things that have to occur, and it's all a sequence. And I don't know that under the current ordinances that we could have done anything different at all. And so, I, I'm just trying to throw it out there and asking if staff has ideas for how we can try to help this process along, especially when I felt really strongly that the first night that we heard from them in public appearances, it was clear across this panel that we wanted to make this happen for them. And so, I, I would just love to see us have that in mind and find ways to make these processes work for the people of the city. Thanks.
Thanks, Mike. Any further comments? Seeing none, please record your vote.
Motion passed unanimously.
Moving on to item six on the agenda, that's our consent agenda. We have 25 items that are on our consent agenda. I've been asked to pull one, and that is 6.20. Are there any others that need to be pulled? Any other items that need to be pulled? Seeing none, what are the wishes of the council?
Move the remaining items.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a second by Mike. Discussion. Any discussion? Seeing none, please record your vote.
Motion passed unanimously.
Moving on to item 6.20, approval of compensation consulting proposal with Heron Palmer. What, Rob, what are the wishes of the council?
Mr. Mayor, I'll move the item.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a second by Mike. Discussion. Any discussion?
Seeing none, please record your vote.
Motion passed unanimously.
Moving on to item 6.20, approval of compensation consulting proposal with Heron Palmer. What, Rob, what are the wishes of the council?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Mark.
Mr. Mayor, I move we close the public hearing and approve the item.
We have a motion by Mark. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Paul. Discussion. Any discussion? Seeing none, please record your vote.
Motion passed six to one with dissent from Alderman Samuelson.
Moving on to public hearing 5.2, building relocation request to 101943rd Street Southeast. Now is an opportunity for those who wish to speak in favor of or against the proposed building relocation request. Now is your time to step forward. Second call for those who wish to speak either for or against the building relocation. Seeing none, what are the wishes of the council?
Mr. Mayor.
Paul.
That we close the public hearing and approve the item with recommendations from staff.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a second by Mark. Any discussion?
Yes, Mike. So, I, that is, it's good to see us coming to the end of this process for the Berkesdads. I guess, I, they are here tonight. I know that it, it wasn't maybe everything you guys hoped. I know it's now the middle of January and it's, I don't know, 10 degrees below zero outside. You know, I don't know what that's going to mean for you to actually get that move done. One of the things, I guess, that I wanted to throw out, this to me shows us where we, we have to find ways to move things as, as quickly as we can. I know that there were a ton of missed steps on the Berkesdads' side. They would acknowledge that as well. They didn't know what they didn't know. And I think that, that that's been an important part of this. But I'm, I'm very sensitive to someone where, when we see them at the first part of September, and there's a chance they could get in that house and spend winter in a warm house. Instead, I think they're spending winter out of that. And, you know, again, I'm not here to say that there weren't pieces that could have been done better on their side. But I think we have to find ways as a city to make sure that we're moving things through, including if that means adjusting ordinances. Because right now, I think a lot of what we run into timing-wise is that we have notice requirements and hearings and all different things that have to occur, and it's all a sequence. And I don't know that under the current ordinances that we could have done anything different at all. And so, I, I'm just trying to throw it out there and asking if staff has ideas for how we can try to help this process along, especially when I felt really strongly that the first night that we heard from them in public appearances, it was clear across this panel that we wanted to make this happen for them. And so, I, I would just love to see us have that in mind and find ways to make these processes work for the people of the city. Thanks.
Thanks, Mike. Any further comments? Seeing none, please record your vote.
Motion passed unanimously.
Moving on to item six on the agenda, that's our consent agenda. We have 25 items that are on our consent agenda. I've been asked to pull one, and that is 6.20. Are there any others that need to be pulled? Any other items that need to be pulled? Seeing none, what are the wishes of the council?
Move the remaining items.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a second by Mike. Discussion. Any discussion?
Seeing none, please record your vote.
Motion passed unanimously.
Moving on to item 6.20, approval of compensation consulting proposal with Heron Palmer. What, Rob, what are the wishes of the council?
Mr. Mayor, I'll move the item.
We have a motion by Mark. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a second by Mike. Discussion, Rob, you asked to have this pulled.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I guess I just wanted to kind of throw out there and find out what exactly this is all about. We just went through the budget process, and we know the city has a very competitive pay scale. We've already talked about that pretty much at length. The structure within our organization, our, our city government, hasn't changed in the last three years. We haven't had a lot of growth or, or, you know, shrinking of the city. So, I don't see that it would necessarily need to change in the, in the interim. So, I guess my question is, why are we going to spend $38,000 with this consulting firm when maybe Harold, or Lisa, or somebody within the city could do some of these things and look at this and, and give a recommendation? Are we gonna, are we gonna use this consulting request to look at the merit-based system? I mean, are they gonna look at that for us? So, those are just some of my questions I had for this.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, Alderman Fuller, great questions. I guess to go back, not, not real far in history, but a little bit, previously-
talk about a special project. Ellen, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mayor Ross, member, members of the council, thank you for your time today. The Minot Symphony is a university and community orchestra that in range to, that aims to enrich lives by providing opportunities for musicians and inspiration to patrons through the education and performance of diverse orchestral repertoire, and has been doing so for nearly a century with, through a collaboration with Minot State University, a unique blend of student community and professional musicians. I come to you today to announce a community collaboration like no other, a century in the making. In celebration of your Minot Symphony Orchestra's 100th season coming up in 2025-26, we are honored to host Your Minot, Your Lyrics, a National Anthem Contest for Minot. We are asking writers, wordsmiths, and poets with a deep connection to the Magic City to submit a 20 to 40-line poem to be considered to celebrate Minot and all things the Magic City represents. The text will be, the chosen text will be set to an original composition of music composed by MSU's Dr. Emerson Eads. There is no fee to enter, leaving no barriers. The writer whose lyrics are chosen for the anthem will receive a $500 cash prize, lyrics credit, as well as two season tickets to the Minot Symphony's centennial season. The official entry form and details can be find up, found at minotsymphony.com starting tomorrow. Entries will be received by midnight on April 21st, 2025, and the entries will be reviewed by a panel of judges, including Mayor Ross, Dr. Eads, and Ephraim Amaya, the conductor of the Minot Symphony Orchestra. The winner will be announced here on May 19th, 2025, and the world premiere of Minot's Anthem will be played by your Minot Symphony with area choirs in March 2026. Entries should invoke a sense of pride, hope, and resilience. It should celebrate Minot's past, present, and future, acknowledging the hard work of its people, the beauty of our landscapes, or the unique charms that truly makes us the Magic City. We look forward to receiving entries from each of you and all who call or have called Minot home, as we come together to celebrate the Magic City in song. I'd be happy to answer any questions, if anybody has any at this time.
Are there any questions? Seeing none, thank you so much.
Thank you.
What a way to start the new year. With that, that concludes the mayor's report. If there are any questions, seeing none, we will move on to the city manager's report.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, be happy to answer any questions with regards to the city manager report that's included in the packet and available to the public.
Are there any questions of city manager? Seeing none, we'll move on to the city attorney's report. Steph.
Mayor, members of the council, there's a written report included in the packet, and I can answer any questions at this time.
Are there any questions of our city attorney? Seeing none, thank you, Steph. That's moving on to item five on the agenda, public hearing, public hearing 5.1, public hearing, consider final approval of Renaissance Zone Case M-105, Boomtown Enterprises LLC, applicant 117, West Central Avenue. Now is the time for those who wish to speak in favor for or against the final approval. Second call for those who wish to speak on this item on the agenda. Seeing none, what are the wishes of the council?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Mark?
Mr. Mayor, I move we close the public hearing and approve the item.
We have a motion by Mark, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Paul, discussion? Any discussion? Seeing none, please record your vote.
Motion passed six to one with dissent from Alderman Samuelson.
Moving on to public hearing 5.2, building relocation request to 101943rd Street Southeast. Now is an opportunity for those who wish to speak in favor of or against the proposed building relocation request. Now is your time to step forward. Second call for those who wish to speak either for or against the building relocation. Seeing none, what are the wishes of the council?
Mr. Mayor.
Paul. That we close the public hearing and approve the item with recommendations from staff.
We have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
We have a second by Mark, any discussion?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Mike.
So, I, that is, it's good to see us coming to the end of this process for the Berksdads. I guess, they are here tonight. I know that it, it wasn't maybe everything you guys hoped. I know it's now the middle of January and it's, I don't know, 10 degrees below zero outside. You know, I don't know what that's gonna mean for you to actually get that move done. One of the things, I guess, that I wanted to throw out, this to me shows us where we have to find ways to move things as quickly as we can. I know that there were a ton of missed steps on the Berksdads' side, they would acknowledge that as well, they didn't know what they didn't know. And I think that, that that's, it's been an important part of this, but I'm, I'm very sensitive to someone where, when we see them at the first part of September, and there's a chance they could get in that house and spend winter in a warm house, instead, I think they're spending winter out of that. And, you know, again, I'm not here to say that there weren't pieces that could have been done better on their side, but I think we have to find ways as a city to make sure that we're moving things through, including if that means adjusting ordinances, because right now, I think a lot of what we run into timing-wise is that we have notice requirements and hearings and all different things that have to occur, and it's all a sequence. And I don't know that, under the current ordinances, that we could have done anything different at all. And so, I, I'm just trying to throw it out there and asking if staff has ideas for how we can try to help this process along, especially when I felt really strongly that the first night that we heard from them in public appearances, it was clear across this panel that we wanted to make this happen for them. And so, I, I would just love to see us have that in mind and find ways to make these processes work for the people of the city. Thanks.
Thanks, Mike. Any further comments? Seeing none, please record your vote.
Motion passed unanimously.
Moving on to item six on the agenda, that's our consent agenda. We have 25 items that are on our consent agenda, I've been asked to pull one, and that is 6.20. Are there any others that need to be pulled? Any other items that need to be pulled? Seeing none, what are the wishes of the council?
Move the remaining items.
We have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
We have a second by Mike, discussion? Any discussion? Seeing none, please record your vote.
Motion passed unanimously.
Moving on to item 6.20, approval of compensation consulting proposal with Heron Palmer. What, Rob, what are the wishes of the council?
Mr. Mayor, I'll move the item.
We have a motion by Mark, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mike, discussion, Rob, you asked to have this pulled.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I guess I just wanted to kind of throw out there and find out what exactly this is all about. We just went through the budget process, and we know the city has a very competitive pay scale, we've already talked about that pretty much at length. The structure within our organization, our city government, hasn't changed in the last three years, we haven't had a lot of growth or, you know, shrinking of the city, so I don't see that it would necessarily need to change in the, in the interim. So, I guess my question is, why are we gonna spend $38,000 with this consulting firm when maybe Harold, or Lisa, or somebody within the city could do some of these things and look at this and give a recommendation? Are we gonna, are we gonna use this consulting request to look at the merit-based system? I mean, are they gonna look at that for us? So, those are just some of my questions I had for this.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, Alderman Fuller, great questions. I guess to go back, not, not real far in history, but a little bit, previously, the council had a wage and benefit committee set up to review over our policies with regards to wages and benefits. One of the recommendations from that committee was that every three years that we would contract with an outside consultant to come in and do those wage comparisons. Those two years in between of every three of those, Lisa Junt, our HR director, and her staff do do that internally on our own, but at that time, the committee felt it was necessary to have that outside check and balance, that every few years that we have an outside professional do that, to make sure that what we're doing internally matches and we're not getting too far off of scale. In addition, as we discussed with the budget process, this contract also includes looking at, making sure that our job descriptions are up to date, that there, provide recommendations with handling of any compression issues that have grown over time, and in addition, to address the, to begin to address the direction of the council of moving towards a merit-based or performance-based pay system, that's all included in this contract.
Okay.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Mike.
Harold, could you also talk a little bit, there, there are some additional deliverables other than just the, just the compensation rates that are also contemplated in this as well, and they're related to structure and some of the other initiatives that you've now kicked off. Can you talk about that a little bit and what we'll also get out of this in that regard?
Maybe I'll defer to our HR director, she was the, the lead on, on putting together the RFP and bidding this out and meeting the objectives that council and I have asked.
Alderman Fuller and the council, one of the initiatives that we are including on this is an initiative that was basically started with Assistant City Manager Tom Joyce. Some efficiencies that we're looking at, and in reviewing the structure and probably taking out potentially some of the outdated job descriptions and maybe beefing them up, we are looking to put some efficiencies in place as well, like for example, some of our administrative staff probably looking at providing some analytical stuff, analytical items to those particular positions that haven't been used in the past, and that is the reason why we are looking at the structure as well.
So, if I can continue, so, so Lisa or Harold, you know, to me, we're starting to get a picture now of what we're gonna see this spring. Both this project, our other consulting project, other work that Tom Joyce is doing and that the rest of your team is doing, Harold, I guess, what I'm looking for when we're going to spend the money like this is, what should we expect to see as we enter that budget process? You know, I keep kind of coming back to this, this type of work to me typically leads to a, a, I guess, a shrinking of the organization, it heads us towards something that's more streamlined and makes more sense going forward. Now, I don't want anybody to read that as, you know, saying, oh, we're gonna get rid of a job, that's not the point, it's more organizational to say, this type of work is no longer needed, so we're going to adjust and we're going to do this. And to me, this seems like a set of projects now that we're putting together that are going to lay out that possibility at least. Is that fair to say, Harold, is that the direction?
Yes, I would say that's fair to say, this particular contract is looking at our, our current structure and how we could potentially change that structure. The, the lean process or those things that Assistant City Manager Joyce is heading is looking more comprehensively about our internal processes and how we do things. So, this, this consulting contract specifically is with regards to personnel, the wage structure, do we need to continue with a 15-step, can we reduce that down to a seven-step, which makes us more competitive with other communities that use a seven-step as opposed to a 15? What are the fiscal impacts of that? And prepare tho, that data and information to come to council for public discussion as we go through the 2026 budget process. So, yes, they do come in, in line, but this is specifically to HR policies and our, our employee structure and our wage structure.
And this might be an opportunity to get rid of the steps itself and maybe go to a salary banding system, which is a lot easier, especially if you're looking at something like pay-for-performance type situation, the steps are a problem for that kind of a thing, it's probably something we'd have to look at salary bands versus steps.
If I can continue, so Lisa, are we, are we, is that question going to be a part of this?
Yes, that's part of the strategy.
Because that certainly is a part of our discussion.
Yes, that's part of the strategy and the challenges that'll be brought up during that first initial discussion that's had with the leadership, and so that is part of that discussion that will happen.
Okay, great.
Thank you. Any further questions? Any further discussion? Thank you, Lisa. Seeing none, we have a motion and a second on the floor, if there's no further discussion, please record your vote.
The motion passed unanimously.
Moving on to item seven on the agenda, action item 7.1, 2025 Alcohol Refund, the Highland Suites. What are the wishes of the council?
Mr. Mayor, I'd move the item.
I'll second.
We have a motion by Mark, second by Rob, any discussion? Harold.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, if I, I may, in accordance with our ordinances, we typically do not consider refunds of alcohol licenses, and they're not prorated either. So, whether you're applying for it at the end of the year, you pay the full amount for the entire year, or if you apply for it at the end of the year and then you're not using it, you don't get a refund for the remainder of the year that you don't use. However, this is a unique situation in that the 2025 alcohol permit was applied for in 2024 as part of the typical process, but prior to January 1, ownership had changed hands, and so this owner had never had the opportunity to actually use this license, and so we felt it was reasonable to request the council consider a refund, even though typically our ordinances wouldn't support that. So, a little bit to Alderman Blessam's point earlier about trying to find a way to do the right thing here, and I just wanted to bring it to light that this is not a typical process that we would do, but we felt as staff that this was, was deserving of council consideration.
Thank you, Harold. Mike?
And thanks for that, Harold, I appreciate that, and so with this, is there, I do think taking that approach makes sense, is there any risk at all, looking backwards, somebody else jumps up and says, well, wait, I had that same thing a couple of years ago, this sounds really unique to me, I did, I don't think it would be...
It's unique, someone would have to change ownership in between the time of application and the first of the year to, to have the same precedent.
Is there any further discussion? Any further discussion? Seeing none, please record your vote.
The motion passed unanimously.
Moving on to item 7.2, city manager recommendations following the Minot Police Department external investigation. At this time, I will turn the mic over to city manager Harold Stewart.
Yes, there's two pages. Mayor Ross and members of this Minot City Council, over the past few months, at this council's direction, independent council investigated allegations of a hostile work environment at the Minot Police Department, staff confidence and police leadership, staff retention, staff morale, and inconsistent disciplinary decisions. As we know, the investigation has concluded, and it is time to take the necessary next steps. As city manager, it is my sole responsibility to make these recommendations. I did not reach these conclusions lightly, I have considered all the facts, issues, and concerns over the past few months, and I have listened to input from all sides. John Klug has served the City of Minot for 30 years as a member of the Minot Police Department. We appreciate his public service and his commitment to the department and his community. But my recommendations are not about one employee or about one person, rather, they are about what's best for the entire Minot Police Department, the City of Minot as an organization, and our community. The Police Department is vital to the overall mission of the City of Minot, and its members will continue to serve and protect our community. Our residents must be able to have faith that our Police Department and its leaders are held to the highest standards of conduct, and that they reflect the values of professionalism, responsibility, integrity, dedication, and excellence that we are committed to as an organization. I believe these recommendations provide the best and most responsible path forward for the Minot Police Department as a whole and for our entire community. Therefore, I am asking the members of the city council to support the following recommendations. First, city management and John Klug have mutually agreed that Klug will not return to the position of police chief for the Minot Police Department. Details of the transition are still being finalized and will require approval of the city council. Two, I'm recommending that the City of Minot pursue hiring an external interim police chief who will serve for a period of six to 12 months. When ready, a nationwide search will be conducted for the permanent appointment of a new police chief. Three, the City of Minot will temporarily delegate the oversight responsibilities of Central Dispatch to a management team led by Fire Chief Kelly Kronchnabel, Assistant City Manager Tom Joyce, and a Minot Police Department representative. The team will review the findings and recommendations of the independent investigation as it pertained to Dispatch and provide recommendations to the city manager on any necessary changes or restructuring at Central Dispatch. This will allow the city manager and the Police Department to focus on its needs while also providing needed assistance to Dispatch. Those are my immediate recommendations, we will also continue to review over the other recommendations that came out of the investigative report, but those were the highest priority, and I'd be happy to answer any questions the council may have at this time.
Are there any questions for Harold? Yes, Mike.
Just one, Harold, just one point in point number two, the recommendation for the external interim, I think makes a lot of sense, I just want to make sure that you're not limited at all with, with that being in there, if we make a recommendation based on what you wrote, are you comfortable with 12 months, would you rather have that be up to 18, are you okay with those days, with those, that amount of time?
I have begun conversations with the recruiting firm, as we talked about this, we felt that, you know, anything beyond 12 months would be hard to find an interim for, because you're getting very close to basically a permanent appointment at that point. I will also stipulate that we'll make every effort to try and find a qualified external chief to come in, but if we can't, then I would probably come back to the council to expedite the, the process of a nationwide search for a permanent appointment, but we at least wanted to make the effort at this time to try and find a qualified external candidate. I also want to make the comment that this isn't about putting somebody in the seat as quickly as possible, I want to make sure that we put the right person there, both in the interim and in the long-term, and that at least the process for the permanent appointment, appointment will include involvement in some capacity of the community and, and the department and, and the council as we go forward. But the interim would be, be with me, and I would do an expedited price, process of reviewing the qualifications, I plan to provide interested individuals a copy of the CPSM study as well as the, the external report findings, and we would review over that and would work closely with whoever that individual is, along with the Police Department, to make sure that there's a develop, there's a development of a plan that all of our police officers have confidence in, that the council has confidence, that the community has confidence in, that we can move forward in beginning addressing the issues that were identified in that report.
Mr. Mayor, with, with that, then I'll, I'll make a motion to accept the city manager's recommendations.
Second. We have a motion and a second, is there any further discussion? Any further discussion? Steph?
And so, just to clarify, just with this motion, like, we would anticipate city management and Chief, former Chief Klug and his attorneys would continue to negotiate a written agreement that would be reduced to writing, we would present that back to the council as well to just kind of memorialize the agreement for moving forward.
Any questions on Steph? Thank you, Steph. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, please record your vote.
The motion passed unanimously.
Moving on, on the agenda, it is time for personal appearances, now is an opportunity for those who wish to step forward and address the council, now is your opportunity to step
I won't lie, I'm very relieved to see any member of the Minot Police Department go, but especially that one. During his, during the time he's been running the Police Department, I've had cases of where people who've been working under his department have officially contacted property management and tried to demand that I be kicked out at least three known times. I don't know, I just forwarded on the email of the last incident where they tried to blackmail me into destroying evidence of a video of a room search, I've just more than had enough. In one instance, I've got it on video where a police officer is trying to encourage people to make false complaints against me and to conduct a citizen's arrest for me recording in public after I checked with the zoning board about whether or not I was in the public right-ofways, which I was wrongly calling easements. I mean, it's been one situation after another. If ignorance of the law is no excuse for a civilian like me whose job does not involve the law, it is certainly no excuse for those that are entrusted to uphold and enforce the law. These are not things that these badges should ever be used for, nor is this the proper manner for anybody that has a badge to be conducting themselves in. They need to concern themselves with matters involving the law. I mean, I'm fine with somebody telling me at full volume they don't like what I'm doing and what they don't think of me, but using an official capacity to contact an employer, a landlord, even a private business to harass somebody has been ruled over and over again as illegal, and it's definitely not ethical. I'm not sorry, I am very glad to see this person go, and I won't lie, I pray to God a much more ethical, law-abiding person comes on. I mean, the very essence of what law enforcement is supposed to do is to uphold the law, that means that they're supposed to live by it, abide by it, and respect it, and that's basically what I'd like to see happen in the Minot Police Department in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Now is an opportunity for those who wish to step forward to address the council, now is your opportunity. Seeing none, we will move on to item number nine on the agenda, that's miscellaneous and discussion items, are there any discussion items to be brought forth? Seeing none, we will move on to item 10, that is adjournment.
So, moved.
We have a motion by Paul, is there a second?
Second.
Second.
By everybody else on the council, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Are adjourned, good meeting, still in time to catch the game, too.
Go Bison.
Go Bison.